So we'll call to order the meeting of the regular meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board. This is November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have Kurt Hathaway, Joe Donardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Geddy. Sharon Russell is slightly under the weather. She had her flu and COVID shots, so she's not going to be joining us. We'll miss her. And please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of the Select Board minutes for November fourth. In your packet. Action's been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that's four in favor, no abstentions. And I'm signing and passing them around. Okay, next. Board member announcements, are there any? Nope. Update from the Select Board Chair, the only one that I wanted to mention what I did off the record, so I'll repeat it here. As you're building your budgets, department heads and Select Board members, please remember that the payroll tax, which the town is now picking up to cover childcare costs, has to be added. It wasn't in our previous budgets. This is a new thing, so just make sure it's some figure is in there for that. Yep. That's all I got. We have, are there any questions from the floor or public comment? Looking in the room and there's none. I'm looking up on the screen and there's none, so we'll move along. Taking things slightly out of orders, the Select Board have any objection to hearing from folks from Cedar? Action item A. Okay, come on up, welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you going out of order. Oh, no. We come to you once a year, you know.
Thank you.
Yes, it has to do with money.
Thank you.
But it has to do also with the success we believe we're having with your support and the town's support. Now, this is about the regional marketing initiative. Our goal, as it was eight years ago when we came here at about this exact time, is to try and bring more people to the county. First question people are asking now is where are you going to house them? Well, that's a separate committee and we're working on that as well. And there's a lot of action going on on that, which is great. But we are here. Olivia, Buck's mom and I, Olivia is our communications and marketing manager, and she oversees the regional marketing initiative, which has built within it the concierge program. She can talk to you a little bit about that, answer any questions you have. We don't want to be repetitive because I think all four of you have heard this before a couple different times. But we do want to come to you every year to make sure you know how successful we believe the program is being. And it's because we get a lot of contributions from a lot of different people and a lot of different organizations. About thirty percent of the funding that goes into this, which ranges between a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year that we spend, about thirty percent of that comes from the towns. We've been to Rutland, we're in Rutland Town now, we've been to Rutland City, to Killington, to Fairhaven. We went to Danby, we've been, we're going to Middletown Springs. There are about ten different communities that have been very supportive of this. And then businesses provide support. And all the names are names you would recognize, from the hospital to Casella, all recognizing they need professional staff. And if they can't find that staff here, they need our help to try and reach out and find that staff. And that's where Olivia comes in. And so she has put together a packet for you to take a look at. She'd like to quickly walk you through that, see if you've got questions. And then you can kick us out if that's what you would prefer to do.
So in addition to attracting people here, one of the ways that we're doing that is through a weekend getaway. So we basically offer an all-inclusive weekend to five families. We've advertised across the country on social media and through Google Ads. And then, once our five families come here, they're really here with a focus on relocating. So they meet with realtors, they check out schools, they... My goodness, what are the other big ones? They, they do a scavenger hunt. I guess that's the big one I want to talk about. And that is bringing them to every single town within Rutland County. I think all of our families this year ended up going to the Hathaway Farm. And they, most of them went through the corn maze.
They'll come out.
That's not where we keep them.
Yes.
That's the goal. Well, the exciting part was they went at night. And they said going at night is like the coolest thing around.
One of them brought little kids at night, too. I was like, you are bold, you're, you're ready for Vermont. So that's one of our big things that we love promoting and talking about. Right underneath that is a concierge program fact sheet. So this is really by the numbers, if you're into data. And it tells you all about how many people have moved here since two thousand and twenty-one. As of October eighteenth, we've had two hundred and eighteen people relocate to Rutland County through our program. Of course, there are others that are moving here that we don't know about. But this is specifically who we have helped. And on the back side of this, it has occupations and industries of the new residents. So as Lyle said, you know, Rutland Regional Medical Center, we have the Forest Service, Casella, Killington, GE. We've had Rutland City Schools, teachers, and then our list of sponsors is also here as well. On this last page right here, this is just showing how important it is for us to put money behind some of our campaigns. So the blue is from June, when we were not spending money on campaigns. And in July, the green bars, that was when we were running the Real Rutland Weekend Getaway Campaign. And as you can see, our numbers for page views increased by four hundred and twelve percent. So it works, it brings people to our pages, and they then get the knowledge about Rutland County and sign up and learn more, and eventually, hopefully, they relocate here. So that is that.
We have a number of concierge volunteers, you want to talk about that?
So we have over thirty concierge volunteers who live, work, and play here in Rutland County. And they are our special secret sauce, that when Carly meets with someone who is interested in relocating here, she finds out that one of them's a teacher, one of them's a nurse, they both have two kids, and they love rock climbing. And she then connects them with a concierge volunteer who is also a nurse and has two kids about the same age and loves rock climbing. So then they have a friend when they visit here, when they move here, when they're just talking to someone to see what it's really like to move here.
So each year we come to you and say, would you allow us to go on your ballot? For basically about a dollar a person. In the past, that's been four thousand ninety-four dollars. Mary reminds me, as long as it doesn't go up, that maybe we can get it on the ballot.
You can't go up more than, is it five or ten percent without, yeah?
We would request the same amount, a level fund. We're finding success with the amount of money that we're putting into it right now without needing to, to raise that. The town has been very supportive, couldn't do it without you. Rutland City puts in sixteen thousand dollars, couldn't do it without them. And then our businesses are doing a great job in helping support the process. If you were to say, what does Cedar do at the end of the day? Every one of our committees is working towards getting more people here. And we need talented people to come in. Nobody else in this room is getting older, but I'm getting older, and we need people to replace people like me. We still are an aging county, and we need to continue to work on that. There's some other things in this packet as well. There's our annual meeting. Our annual meeting brochure here that we've passed out during our annual meeting. And then there's a piece that's by the numbers, which is also in the annual report. People do like data. And this, over the last two years, is funding that we've worked hard and supported others in bringing funding to Rutland County. And just some statistics to roll around and, and talk about.
We'll say the state of Vermont has created the Grow Program, and they have basically based it off of our Real Rutland program. And often call up myself and Carly, the concierge coordinator, and say, how do you do this? Because we want to teach this to other people throughout the entire state. So we're trailblazers.
And we've been at it for eight years. And that's why they call Olivia and they say, how do you figure this out? And they'll look at our website and say, how long did this take you to get to this point? And Olivia will say, eight years. So don't think this is something that just happens overnight. And like marketing, I think some people think marketing is sometimes like throwing money away. But I think what Olivia showed you was when we spend money in a certain way, we're getting in front of people. Eight hundred thousand people she got in front of with this last campaign for the Weekend Getaway. And now we have email addresses, now we can continue to talk to them. And it's interesting, a, a family just moved here, and Carly's been talking to them for two years. And so sometimes it just takes a little bit of time. It's relationship building, and that's the secret sauce.
And that couple is now on our marketing committee, they're on events committees, real estate committee. They're really devoted to the community and want to help out and give backs because they receive so many services from us.
They got here and they said, well, do you think there are any boards or things we could be on? I said, well, slow down. Don't even say that out loud.
But join ours.
Exactly.
The music community, we have enormous focus on the arts in Rutland County that really is underground. And people don't hear about it that. I'm hoping you can plug that a little bit because there are people who are musicians. As a sidelight, they might be teachers, or they might be, you know, physicians, but they might also be in the music scene. So hope you promote that too.
Somehow that is also out because people reach out to us and say, I know there's a big artist community here. Can you help me connect?
I know you put together a blog that talked about all the summer music things that were going on. Somehow either people have talked to each other, it fell into place because Fairhaven does Thursdays and Killington does a different day. And it just seems like you could go anywhere in the summertime and find outdoor music.
Good, good. Questions, comments?
So your data shows us how many people moving here. You have a way of telling how many left? I'm just curious how the, the population for Rutland County, if it, if it's going forward or we're going backwards.
It seems to be going forward. There are some people that leave for whatever reason. But as far as we know, most people are staying here.
One of, one of the things Olivia is working on, the other half of this, is retention. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
So obviously, if part of your family is not happy here, you're going to move back to where you came from or elsewhere. So we are working on doing more meet and greets and connecting people to the community so that they can meet others and learn more about that artists and music community that's here that they may not have learned about at work because it's not all similar-minded people there. And really just making sure that people find their place, that they see themselves and flourish and want to stay.
You have one coming up.
Yes, we have one on December fifth at the Mint Maker Space. And people will be able to come, bring their families, bring their kids, and drop them off at the Junior Mint, and then go be adults with other adults and learn how to make stained glass mittens. We have mosaic coasters, copper bells, and then the kids also have activities to do. Because we've also found that it's kind of awkward just standing around saying, hey, where'd you move here from? But if you're sitting there and you're soldering together and learning something, it's easier to have a more casual conversation.
Yes, sir.
Slightly different vein, but it seems that every time we read about a new business opening or a new thing being constructed, there are, there's some commentary that runs, and a couple of consistent lines. One is, this thing should be something else. And this can't be supported without more manufacturing in the, in the community. I'm just wondering, it's had me thinking, do you have any data on like historical number of main or manufacturing jobs in town? It strikes me that yes, there are a number of employers that no longer exist, but we also have some now that didn't used to exist or have grown over time. And it just seems like if that sort of data existed, it might be useful to communicate that to people. Is what actually is the manufacturing base? I mean, I think there are some businesses in this community that a lot of people have never heard of. They don't drive by them every day, you know, they're tucked away on Quality Lane or wherever. And, you know, people just don't even know some of the stuff that's out there.
The data will show that we have fewer jobs, but the jobs that are, are in manufacturing are more high-paying, and they are smaller, and they are hidden. And so there are many that you, like Kalo Technologies has vastly grown. And they do some really interesting things. When you go through the plant, it's like, oh, that's happening here. So there are many of those smaller ten to fifty employees that we, you just don't see when you're driving by. If you look at Hirschman Windows and Doors, they own the glassmaking company down here now. That is a, it's a companion company that you wouldn't even know about when you drive by the Wilk Plant down here. They're in a, a small manufacturing facility. But there's some very interesting stuff going on in our community. And one of the things I think that you're suggesting, correct me if I'm wrong, is we need to call that out and make sure people know about that.
I would like to know more about it.
Yeah, yep.
Well, and that's marketing, the locals is so important because then you can better market it to people elsewhere, too.
Well, we need to, yes, exactly, it's both. Sometimes we just need to market ourselves to ourselves.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of naysaying that goes on and, but, and, you know, I think some of that, you know, is maybe perfectly well-intentioned about, you know, we don't have this or that business anymore. But there are a lot of them that, like Kalo is one that certainly comes to mind, that people just may not even be aware is there.
It is interesting, our narrative about us is different than the narrative about other people. You just went to Boston over the weekend, and you want to describe that event?
So I went to the Boston Snowbound Expo, and it was a bunch of skiers and snowboarders. And there were so many people who came up to the table and said, I love Rutland. And I was like, okay, awesome. And there were other people also who say, I ski, I ride up in Killington. Oh, I didn't know Rutland was so close, I've never heard of it. Which, sad they haven't heard of us, but also good they haven't heard the negative thing. So it was, it was very interesting, and we're definitely on the map for people.
We have an employee who used to live in New York. He went down there, he has an apartment down there still, and he spent about two weeks down there. And he said he couldn't wait to get back up here, and just because of the pace of life. So it's, it's different.
Would you like to recycle some old folders?
Sure. From last year and the year before.
Let's you keep that historical data.
And I would be remiss, and this is a completely different topic. And I'm not trying to shut down questions about this, but I didn't want to forget that I did speak with Joe Anthony this week. And I said, what would you like me to tell the Select Board? Because I'm sure they're interested in what's going on with Super Walmart. And he said, make sure they know that the progress is on track. That if there are any substantial milestones that he meets along the way, he will come and he will update you on those milestones. So maybe you've already been in contact with him, but.
No, but I would expect that would be as the smaller permits fall into place to feed into the Act fifty, we'll be hearing about those.
He was very upbeat.
Good.
But he always is, so.
Well, that's true.
Hard to be in that business if you're not.
Carrie can correct me about the process, but you do have to make a request by a certain time to go on the ballot. And you have to get, oh, there it is, get your report to Bill so it could also be printed in the town report. And that's there, too. Okay.
It's not his first try.
I was rather presumptuous. And said that Bill could rip those up if you decided you did not want us to go forward.
We're good. Well, thank you for your good work.
Thank you for your support. It, it makes a huge difference. And I don't know if you saw in the statistics, but is it eighty percent or more of those that move here move to Rutland Town and Rutland City?
Yes.
So your support pays off.
Good, good. Okay, now we just got to build homes for them.
That's the other committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
It would be insulting if we go home.
No.
Please do, run fast.
What's the saying, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here?
But I want to go home.
Yeah, yeah. You could stay here, I don't suggest it.
All right.
Thank you.
Good night, take care, folks. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director. And Mike, our condolences on the loss of your dad.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
And thank you for being here, but it's the time you need.
Oh, I will. Don't Have Much Basketball is starting the Wednesday after Thanksgiving. We have our coaches meeting tomorrow for rec. Everything's buttoned up. We had our budget, our budget meeting yesterday, so we have a draft that Bill has now already copied on, and you all have. I don't know how much further you want to go with that. I know we're meeting on the tenth for that, for a bunch of time. Bill, I'd ask that, I, I hate to say this, but if I am not first or second because I have to attend the school board meeting and I don't know how long they'll keep me there.
Want to be first or second?
No, I can't be, so you can put me later.
Joe, Mike.
I did say, we go to that meeting.
After we spend all our money, then you can go.
Yeah.
And then the other thing we had talked about, if Matt, you want to talk about, what else we talked about as far as the depreciation part, or?
Depreciation, well, Mike's raised the issue, he's raised it in the past. I can't remember if it was last year or the year before. About increasing the rate on the rec depreciation, which would require ten vote, I believe. So, and specifically, he's thinking it would be good if, at least for coming few years, that it be increased to match whatever the rate is that the fire department has. Reason being, the anticipation of the need to completely replace the pool in the not-too-distant future. Won't be next year, won't be the year after that, but could be five years out that we need to do that. And, you know, there's some money put away for that, but nowhere near enough. So if we can squirrel away some more before then, that will reduce the amount that we have to borrow later. Obviously, there's, you know, we talked about the fact that you know, there's a little bit of a timing element to this. I mean, if we collect more money in advance, we can earn interest on our money rather than pay it on money borrowed subsequently. But it's, obviously, it's not without cost of the voters if we, if they're able to approve an increase. And, you know, at this point, that fire station bonds haven't yet hit the tax rate, but I think all things considered, planning for something we know we're going to want to do and trying to spread out the cost as much as possible, that helpful if we started getting ahead of it now.
Do you know how much, thinking?
Uh, the, you mean as far as?
Adding.
The adding, so right now, Carrie did some quick numbers, and thank you, Carrie, for that. That was about fifty thousand that it would, to be equal to what the fire department is compared to what we bring in now.
Fifty thousand increase from what it is now.
Right, a fifty thousand dollar increase that would match what the fire department currently gets with their depreciation number.
Well, we usually do it by a rate, and it's a.
Right, so we are, so yes, I apologize. So the, I'm going to mess this up, and that's why I called, like, we are at point zero one two five? And the fire is point zero one seven five? So it'd be a, yeah, okay, so, so the, I, I didn't know that because I was reading from the book, and it's like point seven five. And I'm like, oh, point seven five, that's, and the fire was one point seven five.
And you guys are at three quarters, it's about one and a quarter.
One and a quarter.
Right.
So that was just the thought in prepping for the inevitable, and just getting ahead of the game, so.
We, we bumped it up for the, specifically for the pool, what, three years ago?
We did two or three years ago. But, yeah.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two, so three years.
So we've got around four hundred thousand.
In the depreciation fund right now.
Now, but you know, you're talking about something.
One of the things that I will tell you, this request is going to be repeated.
Or for this department or somebody else?
For all departments.
Okay.
Highway's going to be looking, fire's probably going to be looking, because things are just getting, it's just going nuts, you know? When we, so anyway, I'll give you that spiel when we have a stage.
So that might not be a bad, I, I don't, I'm not going to speak on a turn, I, I hope I'm not. But maybe if we're all in the kind of the same boat that, it's like a, we do that together, rather than, I don't know, I.
I think we'll have to do a separate item for each one.
You do, you, you correct, you do.
Because, you know, the thing that I would really like to do, and we talked with Bill about this a little bit, the wording is slightly different on each ballot, and we need to, I think, standardize the wording.
Be a good idea?
Yeah, I think one we read said something about, what, maintenance and something, but you can't replace, it actually sounded like you couldn't replace the equipment, and it's like, well, that's not going to work, so.
Our minutes for rec may be under desk.
Yeah, the, the original fire department requests for these, when, or when they brought it up in four or five, when we bumped it up, or whenever we did it last, kind of is a better wording. And we want to make sure we kind of keep them, because I think you're going to hear from, I know you're going to hear from Highway. You're going to hear from probably Fire, I, I would think, and.
You're now hearing from Rec.
Right, you know, because the, the, it's just stuff is getting sedained expensive. And, and we are expanding what we're doing for each, for the town. You know, we've expanded the fire, we've expanded the highway, and we've expanded what you're doing. And you've got a great big hole in the ground up there that's wicked expensive.
It is very expensive. And like we've said, we just want to, when it comes to that point, ease the burden of what it's going to cost to replace such a wonderful spot.
Right.
And.
Well, the inevitable one, this is one way that, you know. We're going to spend the money.
I know.
And my personal feeling, and it's always been, is I would rather take a little bit out now and buy what we need without paying interest if we have to borrow. Because the taxpayers are going to pay this amount for this facility. And we can either buy more facility and not have to pay interest, or you have to borrow money and pay interest. So it, it hurts a little now, but it hurts less in the long run.
That's, I just want to be put on that radar so that we don't.
That leads me to the question of, we've got the tenth of December is our budget meeting. Do we want to try and do depreciation the same night, or do we want to do it a separate? Because if we have several requests, and we've got the department head in here, we could just move to the same.
If, if we approve them, which, or we approve to put them on the ballot, and then the voters are going to decide and march, and then we'll just come up with a wording, and we'll, that's the time for the departments to, to bring to the board what we're, what they're asking.
So you, so that any depreciation request should be in by the tenth, and before the tenth, so we know it's coming.
That's the final budget, and then isn't there?
That's going to make it slightly longer, but.
It's got to be done.
Yeah.
And because we are also challenged with having these worded and ready for the ballot by a certain time, too. So the sooner we get on to it.
So you do have minutes on the desk. You know, the meeting essentially was about the budget, so if you want me to go into any detail, I'd save it till the tenth. There is, on the depreciation, I see the minutes did say currently it was point zero zero seven five, which we now determined that's not correct, but.
Just as long as it's correct, Mike, run the ballot.
Yes.
We were going to raise, what, one point?
We raised twenty-five bucks for the police department.
Slightly more than that, but not by much.
And then wasn't it one time we did it, was it the other way? Was it going to be like a million?
Seems a little extreme.
Yeah, so we've been on both ends of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we need to be accurate.
Where the decimal points go and how many zeros.
Okay, so we'll plan on doing that, and we need to get the word out to our departments, too. Okay. Any questions? Or, oh, I did have one, actually, speaking of future planning. When do we start the process of engineering for a new pool? Or, oh, I did have one actually, speaking of future planning, when do we start the process of engineering for a new pool?
We talked about that last night. Um, like I've said for publicly and privately, well privately mostly, is that I really want the fire station and the dust to settle. Or I start talking about that. I, I just do because I think that's only fair. Knowing that, you know, you're five years out is my, just being there for, this is my 22nd year with that lovely hole in the ground. Um, and it's a wonderful hole in the ground, but it's now becoming a hole in the ground. Um, that being said, I think this time next year, we should need to really start thinking of a scoping study and all that and getting an idea of, okay, this is what it would cost, you know, obviously right now, because that's what they're gonna tell you. Um, and nothing's getting cheaper. So I would, next year, that's when we would have this serious discussion in my mind because I really want the fire station to settle and, and people, you know what I mean? I don't, I don't want to add more. I don't want to convolute things when
Okay.
people are talking.
See that time when you start entertaining maybe a designs, the, you know, a different design for a pool. I don't know if, if you've been.
I've, I have one in my head.
Okay, because, because I have been approached a couple of times about like a, a pool that has like a tapered, you know, and so it's not, it's a
So just a quick, and then I'll go, my, my envision is a U shaped with a zero entry. So there's no kiddie pool. It's just a big zero entry. So you walk in and then it gets deeper and as you go. I've seen a couple of pools like that, enough, no frills, just this, a nice pool like we have right now. But yes, zero entry so people can literally walk in and then go deeper.
I think my grandson is interested in that type of pool.
So that, that, that is there, that is one of the, that is one of the ideas.
Four years old, but he already knows what he wants.
But that will be up to the committee and all that, to go through all that. But yes, that would be it.
Are there? So since we've never built a pool, um, and you'll have a year or so to think about and look and get some information, but I'm guessing there are companies out there that specialize either in design builds or whatever.
In their south. They're in the south. And I will, like, I'll start to explore, I'll go to the city first because they just went through this a couple of years ago.
Right.
And they know exactly who's where for who builds what. Um, and then that'll be my first step is meet with Kim and she's already graciously offered to help me.
Really need somebody that's really well aware of how, living in Vermont where it gets below zero a couple of times a winter, how that affects construction and design. You know, I wonder if that plays some part in this pool, that it might not have been quite what it should have been for this environment. You would hope so, but
Seventies and the eighties were wonderful, Joe. I lived them as a young lad, but you know, things were a lot different.
The technology and building and construction is so many advances now, so that you wanna.
Correct.
Yeah.
But next year, at this time is when we'll start to have those discussions, just so we know we're all kind of on the same page. Really want this one to be settled and everybody gets in it and then we can start talking about what I feel is like the last major infrastructure in our town that's expensive. I mean, you can tell me another two or three million dollar project I, for government that we need, I don't know other than the pool.
Probably water systems, but that's another hole.
I think that'll be.
But, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Where we've kind of gone through that gamut of fixing everything we need to fix, so. That's pretty.
Maybe there's some recreation grants out there to help build a pool.
Yeah.
And that's part of, we had talked about that last night as well, as far as me moving up in the position that I'll have more time to.
Well, that highway, you know, this whole thing with the sidewalk.
Yep.
If you want the money, you've got to go through the steps, but our end cost is significantly less to, to do what they ask you to do.
That, it's, it's up there. It's been out, so we're, we're on the same page, which is great. So other than that, um, see your luncheon?
Thursday.
Thursday, 11:30, Bill, Fire Station, I'm gonna be there like 10:30. Can you let me in? Well, I'm okay. I'm just gonna go across the Maple Angus and get our food. And then we'll feed at 11:30. There's no frills on this one. Well, I mean, it's a turkey dinner.
Yeah.
Um, but there's no band or, we're meeting at the fire station, so if you can, that would be great.
It was, when we did do the band one year, it was.
We did a couple of years. It was a lot of fun.
It was fun, but it was loud.
And it was crowded.
Yes.
Because they took up a lot of space, so, but we have, um, 50 people.
Good. I did sign up, didn't I?
You did. You were one of the first. You're, you're good. Joe, I didn't see your name there, but that's okay. You're more than welcome to Johnny come lately if you want.
I don't want to go, it's because I don't take time off to do anything.
I know, but you're fine.
And, and we have a committee meeting that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's Thursday at 11:30 at the fire station.
I qualify, you know.
You can bring us leftovers. It's one to remind you, dude. I mean, I qualify too, and so does Dave, so if you want to sneak out to go to the bathroom for a few minutes.
You can bring us leftovers. We'll probably still be here. We'll probably still be here.
No, but that's all I have.
Okay, anything else from Vermont? Hey.
You can stop mowing the grass.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
All right, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Well, again.
Hi.
Um, not a whole lot on the, the agenda. Um, we did fill our salt shed.
Six, I saw the bills.
662 tons.
All right. Fabulous.
Then how much can you buy if we need to, how much can, did we buy or do we allocate?
About half.
That's about half. If you don't use any, that's okay.
Yep.
Because that means we're not gonna have a lot of winter.
Yep, I'm all good with that. I think we're gonna use some next week.
Um, they, they are so all over me when I say anything.
Well, you know, it's, when I looked at that forecast.
Because I dread it just as much as they do.
It's like, okay, so if you look at next week, what is the worst day to have crappy weather?
Uh, the Wednesday before, Wednesday evening.
Wednesday would be the worst.
Wednesday or Thursday.
Yeah.
Well, Thursday for these guys because they're all gonna be gone.
Yeah.
And that will, and when I looked at that longer forecast, it's like crap.
It is.
It is. We'll see.
It's the name of the game.
Every time somebody, we always, half the country's flying guaranteed to have a blizzard.
Yeah.
Uh, did, had a, another hazard mitigation plan meeting the other day. That's we're almost there. Uh, we have, uh, I know Joe will probably talk about this in the committee report, but we had another sewer plug uh, down on the south end, down by Days Inn last Friday. Bringing into a fairly regular thing.
Are we, uh, are they covering the cost for this? Can they, can they be covering the cost? This is ridiculous.
The problem with, this comes from our meeting last Thursday, um, is we can't point a finger at anybody at this point. So some investigative work is going to be needed. Um, one of our suggestions from our meeting is to go to Denny's. Um, probably Dave, um, I've talked to JP and CP as health officer to maybe go along and see and make sure that the proper um, stuff is in place for grease traps and stuff. Um, this weekend Kurt did a little um, reconnoitering on his own and he pulled a couple of manhole covers and he looked down in there and it appears that there are soft drink containers coming from Days Inn. And so it kind of identified where they're coming from. So Days Inn needs a visit. We need to get to the bottom of how they're getting these things into the system.
It's a closed system. It's not like they have a trash can, they put it in and it goes in the sewer. It's a closed system.
Right, so they're either trying to force them through toilet traps.
A 28 inch Gatorade bottle.
Somebody's just having fun doing stupid stuff and.
Is that what it is?
You know, they're, they're, they're either pulling the toilets out and dropping these things in, but that's only three inch pipe on the most. So I don't know how they're doing this. But, but this is the stuff that's in there. And so we might as well talk about this because we're here.
Yeah.
So that sewer line across Route 7 has to be repaired. And I guess we've got to figure out whether we want to jump in with both feet and swim or how, but I think we're gonna need to get somebody on board to design a fix.
It's undersized is what it is.
It's six to four to six. We find who does it, designed it. They should be part of the backfill for this new sewer line, but um, the, the concerns is how do we get across, I don't know, 100 plus feet, 150 feet on Route 7. You know, you can't open cut that. They're not gonna probably allow that. So what we're hoping is we authorize Dave to start talking with, if you want to work with Otter Creek, um, I think they're as good as anybody. Maybe there's, you know, we're hoping there's technology out there directional boring and they can go across and just put a whole new line and then we can change a couple of manholes on the ends and make it work. But.
Robert Clark is coming on Thursday.
He is coming.
Okay.
It's our meeting. Perfect. You're on top of things, William. I like that. So anyway, that, we, we think that this is gonna be a recommendation from the three of us. That we move forward with coming up with a design. Um, we're gonna take, you know, the water sewer account's gonna take a pretty big hit on this. I'm gonna throw you a number, a couple, 300,000 probably to go a couple hundred feet across.
Anyway.
I think boring might be cheaper though. I don't know.
There's either, you either directional bore or you pipe burst it, one or the other. I'm not sure which way.
I'm not sure if they can pipe burst something, you know, to go to 12 inch or something like that over six.
What would you like? Well, we're gonna go with the recommendations from the engineer.
Right.
Goes across. If he says it should be eight or 10, then that's what.
It's probably gonna be directional drill.
Yeah, and I'm thinking bigger is always better.
So I think it's, I think it's eight that runs along the front to Taco Bell. Looks like that's eight.
I think it is, yeah.
It's six. I said six that goes all the way under seven now, so I don't know if that got changed at some point, but it is six all the way under there. But it's got, when it comes into that structure in front of Aspen Dental, it's got a double set of 45s and drops about three feet. So that's why sometimes it's hard to get the jetter up through there. Instead, they should, they should have popped it through the manhole, but dropped it inside and they never did. So.
You, are you suggesting we do something about that too?
That would be part of.
Not all of it, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, the money is there and it's for this purpose, so, yeah.
What we are incredibly lucky is Diamond Run doesn't come this way. It goes with the other one through the 12 inch.
Okay.
Goes up the railroad.
It goes up the railroad tracks and that goes, that goes through the other compromised manhole. But at least, you know, because that, that would be a major problem. So GE and Diamond Run all go the other way and this is for this little pocket now.
That too.
What, go ahead, Chris.
But, but the first, the first problem, which is talking with Days Inn about.
Days Inn and, and.
Who's gonna do that?
Denny's. I, I know.
I, I can go talk to them. I don't know that they're gonna know. I'm gonna talk to a manager that's not gonna know.
You know, and, and like I say, if you can coordinate with JP, he'd like to go.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah, as the health officer.
We should probably, we should probably send letters to those three businesses saying we're finding abstract things in yeah, our manholes.
And we will be visiting.
Yeah, can you keep an eye on, knock it off?
Yeah, I mean, this is all of a sudden, it's, I mean, it's, I, I think that the car wash has something to do with it just because of the volume that they're putting into this.
But you would think just straight water going through would make it better.
There's, there's something in it because when they were down, I was down there Friday with the guys and they were jetting it. They got the jetter hung up underneath seven. So there's something in the line that's not coming out.
Can you put a camera through or is it too long?
That was one of the things we were hoping to get done.
Somebody keeps putting big bottles in there. It's probably the same person over and over.
Right, so it's probably a long-term resident.
This is kind of, all of a sudden, last, I don't know, two or three times we've been down there, we've pulled, you know, energy drink cans out and stuff like that and then, you know, Gatorade bottle now.
In order for them to get in, it's gotta be an opening someplace.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had them down there at the beginning of the week and they pulled out some styrofoam and a couple of pieces of wood and, you know, so it's, it's, it's all of a sudden, it's, this hasn't happened until now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's odd.
There's no way stuff can be coming from the car wash.
I wouldn't think so. I mean.
I popped that manhole at the car wash and that all looked pretty clean.
Yeah.
And I mean, the only other.
I've looked in there too and it's basically gray water is all that's coming.
Yeah. The only thing, the only other thing it could be is somebody's popped manhole lids and stuffed stuff in there, but.
Those are, those are 30 inch lids, those are.
You need a pry bar.
Two guys to get those off.
Need a couple pry bars to get them off, like.
That wouldn't just be a prank.
Uh, yeah, like it's, it takes some effort.
Right.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks for looking into it.
Yep.
And the money's sitting there, so.
Um, we gotta get some kind of a resol, figure out a permanent good resolution to this issue and get rid of the 45s and the kinks and get it designed so it meets standards to flow because I don't know if some of that stuff even meets standards for operation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Somebody putting it in while you out, this will work. We do that at home at the fire, but you can't, you know, when you're out here in the sewer line, we gotta get this right.
Yeah, I mean, it was probably a service at one point in time that went under seven and then they just started adding and stuff through and it's just.
Eight inches per foot.
So the other, the last thing I got is we, uh, I had to take some time off last week to deal with some family issues. So I had the guys start working on the shared used path on the, um, Chessiana Drive side. So they got the trees cut and, uh, we had, uh, Trees Incorporated come in today and grind the stumps for us and we started graveling that, so we've made it from Chessiana Drive into where the path drops down over the bank. We started doing that today, so, uh, while we're in between times where we can't really do construction, construction and we're not plowing every day, we're gonna be chipping away at this and see if we can put this thing to bed finally.
Excellent. That'd be nice.
The, um, material that you have up there, the pavement, ground stuff, can you use that on the path or no?
Uh, Otter Creek designed it and they designed it for sure packed on the top.
Okay.
So that's what we have. I don't see why we couldn't use.
So next, or this Thursday, we'll ask, ask Robert, we'll ask Robert, because you have a supply.
Yeah, because the gravel that we have been using, we used inch and a half, uh, crushed uh, to get in where, to where we are now. Now we're just filling it with just fill from out back somewhere to fill that big hole and, um, that stuff that we had purchased last year for the other end of the path. So we already had that, but we don't have any sure pack, so if we get to that point, we're gonna have to buy it.
Yeah, basin it with inch and a half, we'll begin then topping it with milling center, so.
We could use the pavement, save us a little money, and you have it.
Anything else for Dave? Not?
That's.
Thank you very much.
All I've got.
Do you want the rest of the highway committee, so?
Anything else?
Well, the big, the big bugaboo is the post road sidewalk.
Okay.
The, I think the state's a little picky, but it's, um, what, total level by half quarter of an inch.
Quarter.
Yeah, and they don't want to reimburse us so for the grant, the 48,000. So the suggestions that were made, that you can rip it all up and redo it.
That, the state made that suggestion?
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep. Um, the other thing.
They're gonna pay, never mind.
It's gonna cost, would you say it's gonna cost 50 plus thousand?
I was just back of the napkin figuring 50 grand. They, they said we could mill, mill a portion of it off and then repave it because we're off like a quarter of an inch. So I said, how am I gonna, I can't get a quarter of an inch to stick to anything. And they're like, no, you'd have to mill it off first and pave it back. But then they're not happy because the sidewalk abuts the
pavement.
Pavement, the driving portion of the road, but I needed to do that to get the five feet width. So we didn't have to build a retaining wall by the school, by the steep part. So they said, well, there's a thing in the ADA guidelines that you can, you can go down to four feet sidewalk for less than 200 feet, 175 feet, whatever it was, which we've got there. So they said we could cut out a foot of it, grind off an inch and a half of it and then hand pave in the length of it and put in a green belt. Of course, by putting in a green belt, everybody that's dropping off their kids that are double stacked in post road right now are double stacked on the sidewalk, so the green belt will never be green unless we paint it.
Because what we've done is we've increased the width of post road by five feet, so the cars going to the school have five more feet of pavement to park on for those short intervals at the picking and delivering, so.
An appeal.
The grant, the grant was for, is a 50% grant, so we're in it for 46, 48,000, so we gotta spend 98 to get 46. We're, we're, and we're at the 98. So anything we do from here on just adds to the overall price of the project and we're not gonna get, he's like, they said, well, if you grind it, we won't pay for you to grind it, but we'll pay for the extra material. Well, we're already there, so they're not gonna pay for anything.
We already, yeah.
So if we do nothing.
This is crazy. Okay, so let's approach it from that way. This is crazy. And there usually is some kind of an appeal for some determination like that. Why don't you just file an appeal and say, this is crazy. It's a quarter of an inch. It's within, I don't know, some kind of standard. It must be. Aren't there deviation standards? You got, you know?
They're not gonna let you get away without the green belt. What's, that's ADA compliance. It either needs to have a curb or green.
So that's the issue and not the quarter inch?
Well, that's, it's all, it's, it's all in the same ball.
Yeah.
So if we wanna just forego the forty eight thousand and leave it, we've paid for it. Everything's done. We're not hock for anything. We can just say, leave it the way it is and it's ours.
Is this, alright, so if it's not ADA compliant, whose fault is that? Does, was it, is it, was it not designed to be ADA compliant? Was it just not installed according to design or?
I asked the pavers to pave in a little bit of a lip on the roadside to keep the water from running down over the bank and haven't chased that forever. So that three quarters of an inch or whatever that is at the roadside might be the, what throws it out of.
So they're saying it's tilting away from the road.
Yeah, tilt it away from the road.
Seems like that's what you.
Right.
I mean, the, the people in the wheelchair have to give it an extra pump every four turns on the downhill side or it's, it's what it is.
Alright.
We gotta decide whether we wanna, we can, we can file for an extension, get a year to decide what we're gonna do. And if we decide a year that we don't wanna do anything, then we just bought, we did a sidewalk and we paid for it.
God, I hate leaving money on the table.
I do too, but if we're gonna spend more, then we're gonna get back to.
No, but this is.
Yeah, it's annoying.
Just like really.
I think there's some miscommunication between the requirements of the grant and what was put down and what we did. I, I don't know. Cause if Dave knew that he had to have a green belt in there before he started this to be ADA compliant and, and get the grant, then we would have moved over and done the, um, the foot, you have to move over at least a foot. But it's not, and that's not gonna stay, just like you said, it, it, it doesn't matter. And then the cost of the project would have been a little bit more because you're gonna have to probably put up some retaining walls. So.
Right.
So where are you?
And the state would have been paying more.
Um.
He's only gonna pay forty six thousand.
They're, they're only gonna pay the, I think the grant was forty eight or so.
Forty, yeah, forty eight.
They weren't, so if we spent a hundred and twenty five to do the project, we're still only gonna get forty eight out. So I think we filed for the extension. If they deny it, then now we are, we are.
Why don't we try as a backup, getting paid for all of the parts of the sidewalk that are in compliance and then we'll swallow the part that isn't.
Well, I think it all isn't because there's no green belt, right? Yeah. But they didn't, I don't believe there was anything in your operational manual there that you had to have that.
No. No, I mean, Otter, Otter Creek designed that also.
Yeah.
And, you know, the.
Well, we'll run this all by.
Yeah, I mean, the, the.
Maybe he'll have.
The reason we can't end up where we were is because I didn't wanna have to put in a retaining wall because then you gotta put in a handrail and, you know, all of that stuff. So that just, then that just gets, starts to get crazy.
Now we got a two hundred thousand dollar sidewalk.
Right. Does the grant not specify the requirements? They just not tell you until after you built it what they wanted you to do? Any, anytime you build a sidewalk with any sort of federal or Vtrans funding, it has to be built to ADA compliance.
So.
Which is why the sidewalk ends at the driveway at Shazana because there's no way to build ADA compliance up onto Shazana.
Right.
So at that time, Byron was gonna build the sidewalk and then the next year was gonna build the rest of the sidewalk up around the corner.
And actually, Derek brought that up when we were having our meeting and he said it's not ADA legal fine or whatever he said to leave it at a driveway. And I said, well, we actually have Otter Creek is designing the next phase to go up Chessana. So he said, well, I'll let that one go then. But that was, that, that's on the list too.
It's hard when you, you know, you have inclines and you're out here in the boonies trying to build stuff to that standard. It's, it's difficult. And I don't know how they're gonna make that transition.
Well, Otter Creek is doing, uh, they haven't done them yet, but they're gonna do borings to see what the ledge is, how hard it is, how deep it is. And cause it's, it's gonna have to come out to make that ADA. Or we just, or we just do it and don't get a, don't get a grant for it. Then we can do it and it doesn't have to be ADA.
Yeah.
But like you can't, they can't make you change topography for a sidewalk. I mean, we put a grant, a, a sidewalk on Grant Avenue in the city that's like this. It, the sidewalk was totally disjointed and we tore it all out, put a new sidewalk in. We didn't have to change the slope of the hill. It's, is what it is.
If you, yeah, if we're going for the grant money, then you.
Right.
Well, yeah. But there's gotta be some appellate.
Well, we'll run this by Robert on there and, and at the least we'll apply for the extension.
And that's in the works.
Okay, good.
And we'll see. Um, I think that, and then we've got a situation, that's one up on Post Road. Um, the gentleman has called Dave or emailed Dave. He's emailed me. We've gone back and forth, water runs wherever. And so we got a hold of the, he got a hold of the contractor that did the original work and, and he's talked with Dave about this and they're requesting that if we pay, the homeowner is requesting that if we pay for the materials, it's basically a big dry well. They dug a hole in the ground, filled it full of stone. You remember the one up off of Georgiana or up in there? We went and looked at with Byron. The water came down and went and then did, and I don't remember that one. We ended up being able to daylight it somewhere and put some cover. So the request is that if the town pays, it might be a, uh, seven yard truckload of stone. Um, he'll hire a private contractor who did the work the last time and do it again. What happens? I think the stone's getting full up. So there, once he digs it up, we're gonna find out what's there. The other option is to do the same thing, put some kind of, cut something in there and daylight it out behind his house and bypass his driveway and his leach field. But I think that's on him.
On run, that's probably two, two hundred fifty, three hundred feet.
But that's on him. That's behind, that's on him.
Yeah.
Yeah. But so if the board's okay with that, authorize and Dave to do that, the load of stone.
Do you, is that a motion?
Yes.
Motion's made to authorize Dave to, to a load of stone for Mr. Hulse on um, post road extension to, uh, help solve a water drainage problem in his yard threatening his leach field.
And, and like I said, we're, we're assuming it's gonna be about.
And with the understanding that Mr. Hulse is doing the work, hiring his own contractor, we're just getting the stone.
So is the, I'm a bit confused about the, uh, the actual complaint. It's a complaint that town did something on the road that's causing this problem.
It's just normal runoff. He doesn't, he seems to think it's something I said, the road hasn't been paved. Nothing's changed. It's just that what was there it's just not working in, in, in McCurry or excavate. Ricky McCurry did the work. So he talked to Dave and he's. Huh?
Did which work?
The original work where this area is to collect this stormwater that comes off the road. The problem was there before. So they dug a hole in the ground, filled it full of stone and the water goes in the stone and it's, Ricky, no, the homeowner did it.
Why is this now, or, cause the town supplied the material the last time?
Yep. Ah, yeah. So we're just doing the same thing again.
Yeah.
We're not paying for the excavator and the digging and the labor. We're just putting the stone because it is an issue where road water is coming off the road and there's no place up there for it to go but down his driveway. The other option is dig across poster, put a drop inlet, dig across poster and dump it in the field on the other side. Now that land going over there is gonna be upset. So we don't wanna do that. That's just gonna add insult to injury.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zip.
Alright, so I don't think that's pretty much all. And then the folks from Carmel Place are back on us again about whatever up there. And to tell you the truth, and I think this was kind of a unanimous agreement, um, we're not all that excited about taking that road over.
And until they.
Uh, yeah.
Is this the one we've been looking?
Oh, yeah. This has been going round and round and round.
As built.
We don't have anything. So the, the problem with up there is the water in sewer along to the city.
They.
Along to.
Huh? It belongs to the city. They needed it to the city.
Yes. So the city owns the water and sewer. They went, did not go through the town sewer contract or anything like that to get that done. They originally did. And then they did a direct line for the, everything down there. So we take that road over. Somebody's gotta get about, we either gotta get the sewer back or we're gonna own a road that's got city water and sewer under it. And I see nothing but trouble coming from this. They have not been able to meet the requirements of our ordinance that requires certain specifications.
That's right. And this has been going.
Are they coming to the meeting?
They are coming to.
Oh, man. So we might be coming down to have lunch with you guys at the fire station.
So what's new?
Well, we'll hide you in the crowd.
New to tell us about this?
Or nothing. So they have their annual meeting. They're actually using this room Thursday, late Thursday to have their meeting. Um, and they're wanna talk about it then. So the timing was fortuitous that we're meeting in the morning.
Right.
But we're again experiencing, I have two people coming with separate tracks for the same requests and, and so I invited both of them to come to the meeting so we could talk about it, but it, we, we kinda seem to be stuck. And it's, they're stuck with information that they want, they don't wanna provide. And legitimately, it's a lot of work on their part to get it done. And it's just trying to get over that hurdle of, are you gonna meet the requirements or not? Like, we're not gonna change the requirements.
And we, we've held other people, other developments to this standard.
The other thing with this development that's unique, this is a development. If we take that road over, that becomes a subdivision. That road belongs to that development.
There, there's no, there's no right away.
There's no right away. So that means it's gotta be surveyed.
Huh? There's no lot.
There's no lots. There's no lots. One big happy family up there.
So they'd have to get surveyed.
Surveyed.
With our right away and deed the right away over to the town.
Which has city water and shore that's deeded to the city buried under that road.
Yeah, and it's.
This is not a good deal.
It's all possible, but they're gonna have to do all the legwork to make this happen.
There, there should be, add no expense to the town.
As I remember, there would be drainage and runoff easements required.
We have that.
Yeah.
The stormwater portion because we, we helped them out with that.
Yes, we did.
And that helped us out with our MS four stuff.
Yeah.
So.
I mean.
The part of me that listens to this is these folks wanted to live in this type of environment when they purchased into this project. And I know, I know they pay highway tax and, and all of this, but this was of their choosing. And so now they wanna get out of this, but they seem to be unwilling to meet the requirements of the town. And we've made everybody else pretty much stick to the standard.
Yeah. And I mean, it's, they, they could do the legwork and come into compliance. And when they do, of course, the town should accept that road because they are paying taxes. But until they do that, there's nothing else we can do from this side. And I mean,
Other people.
Whether the water sewer gets deeded over to us or there's a written maintenance agreement between the town and the city, whatever that is.
Those hurdles would be easier than getting through these people.
But whatever, whatever that is, that's up to them to figure out.
Yeah.
You know, and they need to figure that all out before we're gonna accept anything.
And all the utilities are buried.
Oh, yes, right.
So, so.
Which we've adopted many other neighborhoods that have that, but we need to know where they are.
Right.
I mean, and that's the discussion we've been having for what, twelve years?
Yeah, I don't know.
We need to know where this stuff is.
Where GMPs, what their requirements are.
In terms of, GMP probably has all that mapped out. They're normally pretty good. And in terms of like road based gravel, that I would be willing to let slide because the road's been there. We know it's.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that.
We're not worried about the road base, but we're worried about what's under it.
The road was junk and it wasn't drained properly. It would be heaved, cracked and, and it actually looks pretty good for its age.
Yeah. And it was a reputable contractor that did it at the time, but we just need to know where all these utilities are.
Things and they have to take the time to put in the three rod class three road right away.
Yep.
And then that probably, there are sidewalks, right? No sidewalk? No sidewalk. Okay, good. We're not inheriting any sidewalk. Okay, good. I, I thought, I was, no, I thought there was a sidewalk around the outside, but okay.
No.
Um, and they also have to know that, um, they're on their own for, so homeowners association pays for all the winter maintenance. But, you know, we plow the road and sand it and that's it. We're out of there. So we'll have a, I'm sure, an exciting discussion on Thursday.
Thank you guys for doing this.
Again.
Again.
Again. And, and so do we have a list of what they have provided per the ordinance? They, they did some stuff.
We had a.
Cause you looked at it, right?
Yeah, there, there really wasn't anything in there that matched up with our list. I mean, it gave us a lot of documentation about, you know, who bought the property, when they bought the property. But it, it, there was really nothing. And there, there was a survey in there with the property pins for that entire parcel.
Yeah.
But there was really was nothing in there. There was no asphalt.
Right, okay.
At the, at the outside perimeter, which is what all they cared about.
And, and then the, the prints that they gave us were just plan drawings. There was no.
Yeah.
No, no sewer stubs, no water. Nothing. It was just conceptual from the beginning.
Did you folks do a budget or not yet?
Not yet. We're, we're gonna try to work on that Thursday.
Try to fit that in sometime.
Ran a little long.
Sometime Thursday when we're ordering in dinner.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else for Dave?
I think we, we beat that to death pretty good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you guys.
What, what? Oh, the other thing is, is, um, the, did we not say aye?
Yeah, we did.
I think we did.
We did. But, but one other thing we've talked about and is the, um, um, the grindings that Dave has done up to the town and about the pavement grindings and we're selling those. So they come up with a price of twenty bucks a load.
Okay, we did talk about this, yes.
And, and so Dave has kinda been selling some off to whatever, um, did we put a limit on the number of loads in a calendar year?
We, oh, I don't believe we did put a limit on it.
I don't know. Do you want to per?
Probably need to come up with a number, yeah.
Okay. I was thinking ten or twenty, something, ten up to that.
I, I need to get back on it, kinda put in the, the, the letter that I came up with basically just says, if you want these, you can have them. And once we drop them, they're yours and don't call us to come get them, cause we're not.
Right.
But I need to kinda put some more information in there about, you know, we, we'll get to you, we'll put you on a list and we'll get to you when we get to you. This is mostly rainy day stuff. We're not gonna shut our operation down and bring you.
Probably not happening during the winter.
Probably not gonna happen during the winter. So I just need to kinda put that together a little bit.
And we should, we should adopt it as a policy so everybody's treated the same. That's all.
But in the interim, they've been charging twenty dollars a load for the stuff that's been going out. We've done things backwards before.
No.
Alright.
Right. Anything else?
No, I think that's it. There'll be more coming next meeting, I guarantee you.
Oh, I'm sure. Alright, Ed Dumas, town police chief. Okay. Um, we did have a highway committee meeting.
Police committee, police.
Please. Police committee meeting. Um, and we had, and actually this is sort of slides over to John Paul Fagnant too because um, we took a look at the, at JP's suggestion and at the request of the other select board members on the question of whether the AFIS machine could be purchased, the fingerprinting machine could be purchased using, um, uh, savings in the police budget because we hadn't filled a couple of positions, one three months in and one half a year in. It, there was way more to it than that. However, because.
It's never easy.
It's never easy. Um, but the bottom line, and, and I'll have Matt explain it, cause.
Yeah, cause the minutes are not accurate.
Yeah, okay.
Close enough.
No, not close.
So what.
A lot of numbers here.
Yeah.
Well, the.
Not the right ones.
There's one other thing we also, so we need to approve that if you, if you so choose. And we also need, there is a request from the police department. They are about to hire a school resource officer, um, who is a level three qualified. We had budgeted for a level two qualified for the, the um, SRO who left. So there is a request for a five thousand dollar pay bump over the year, which would be half a year's worth for this year and we'll adjust the budget for next year.
About twenty five hundred.
Twenty five hundred. So those two things and honest to God, they were, and, and then they were moving targets on the health insurance to see what we were, we were saving some and we were spending more. So Matt will explain all of this and why we think we can indeed. Matt will explain all of this and why we think we can indeed afford to use the vacancy savings in the budget for the AFIS machine. Okay, Matt.
Probably don't have all the numbers, but, and really you don't need to know all of them. But spicy to say, there are some vacancy savings from both not having an SRO for half the year and from not hiring the third officer position until recently. Um, that, you know, some of that, well, I mean, SRO obviously all that, not all that savings is really attributable to us because the school is paying a good chunk of that, uh, salary. So we made an effort to determine what the apportioned savings to us are on that. Um, we also factored in, um, the health insurance costs, um, are going, they're going up a bit, but there are, we're also gonna have some savings on Ed's line for that starting January 1st. That helps. Um, so when we factored in everything for the third officer, including salary, insurance and pension and all of this stuff, we figured I think bottom line was we were estimating, oh, and the other big thing, the other big component was, uh, we've got, uh, we had a large number in for training in case we had to provide some training for the new officer hire, which we don't need because he's experienced. So we got about 10 grand in savings there, Ted, thanks. So all taken together, we think that uh, there's maybe 44, 45,000 somewhere in there in this current budget of expenses that we're not going to expend. Which is more than enough to cover both the increase in that SRO salary and the fingerprint machine.
And then there's a yearly maintenance contract with that too, right?
Yeah, that's all factored in.
I figured into this.
So if you, the machine is 18,500.
Yeah.
The printer is 1325. Maintenance cost is 2,800. And then a printer at 199, so that's like 3,000. So, you know, it's 20, I don't know.
22 something is that?
Yeah. Yeah, so um, in coming years, of course, we won't have the hardware because we will have the machine, but we will have the maintenance.
So when you guys are working on the budget for starting next summer, that will be, have to be added into that.
3,000 in for the ongoing cost, but this year, and ordinarily, we would look to another source to get a capital expenditure like this. Um, as Kurt points out, if it were left over, it went into the capital, it would go into the capital fund anyway, so we're not using it in advance.
So Bill, in the minutes, I would suggest changing the estimated savings were approximately $44,000.
Yeah, not the 70.
Was talked about.
Yeah, that was.
It's the
Yeah.
The school, yeah.
For apportioning the school.
Yeah.
It, it was, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so is there a motion?
Two motions.
Let's do two motions. So we have a, okay.
All right. So I guess the first motion would be to uh, approve an increase in the budgeted salary for that SRO position um, by $5,000 on an annualized basis.
Um, motion's made. Is there a second? Motion's made in the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think we beat this up pretty good, Mary. Nice job.
We're good.
Okay, so, um, all in favor of increasing annualized 5,000 for the SRO, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Motion number two.
Would be to purchase the fingerprint machine and uh, everything that goes with it.
Necessary hardware.
Necessary hardware and, uh, the maintenance contract.
Yep. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to purchase with the, the current budget savings. Right. Okay. Um, the fingerprint machine, the printer and maintenance and, and the print, um, on both. Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zip.
For, for the record, should that be coming from their equipment line?
I don't.
Guess so.
It can.
In the meeting, but.
Yeah, it was just so. If you take it from the new equipment line, it shows a good track. That line will be overspent.
It'll be overspent.
But the total budget should be okay.
Okay.
It will be.
And I think that's what we've done for everybody else is to keep them, because it's hard if you start taking a little chunk here and there, but.
Okay. Motion carries the equipment line. Um, all right. I think that's, that's the only thing we needed to bring to you.
So it just begs the question, do they not have their own depreciation?
What's that?
About their depreciation.
Yeah, we didn't talk about.
Well, you can talk, I would discuss when you meet on Monday, I would talk about it Monday because that, well, it's, it's what we're, we're
Yeah.
We're, the town is growing. Our police is growing, highways growing, fires going, recs growing and
We're gonna have to figure out who to prioritize though, because if we try to up all those.
We may not be able to do them all in one year.
Yeah, um, it, and where, where did I see? In highway, there needed to be a truck schedule. Police cruiser needs to have a schedule too.
So they, you know, that's one of the things we're gonna be working on, figure out which one should go. So the way we talk is the Kenworth that they bought, you know, we're gonna get two years out of that truck. And then it'll be, you know, with used truck to start with, but it got our foot in the door and got us going. And then look at, but, uh, it's about somewhere between 180, 200,000 dollars to replace a fully equipped seven year truck. And then we gotta figure out how long we want to keep them.
Back into highway?
No, no, I'm just giving you an idea when you're talking budgets.
Highway runs on forever, Mary.
Uh, we have in the past, um, done leases on police cruisers. So we all also want to toss that into the next. See if it's worth.
We'll have more information on vehicle purchases.
Okay, uh, so John Paul Fagnant, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
So I don't have anything, uh, in addition to what I put in that memo to you today. Uh, the good news is, is that the general contractor agreed to install the fire department signs for a flat $1,000. Um, and so that would support that effort. The, the other thing that is being requested by the general contractor is a 50% release of the retainage. Um, we're actually almost at the point where we're gonna have to be releasing all retainage except for the final 10%. And I would expect that that's gonna occur sometime in December. But right now, the project is about 90% complete. And as I reported to you, all the systems are up and running. Gas tanks are filled, heat's on, electricity's on. So we're, we're almost there. It's right around the corner. But in the meantime, the general is requesting that they be allowed to access 50% of the current retainage.
Um, okay, so the, this this ties into a, um, when we had the fire committee meeting, we were talking about um, you'll remember that there were some signs the fire department requested be installed over the, the four bays. And then the shield of the fire department and the town um, seal. Okay. We had a $5,700 estimate for just those signs. But then we went back to, um, awesome graphics and said, how much to install? And that was very close to $10,000. So that
Total.
Total. Okay, so installation was like another 4,000 on top of 57. Okay. Um, so we were wondering if there were a cheaper alternative, i.e. how about the contractor that's right there and knows the material they just put up? And could they do it for cheaper? Um, so the proposal is, and I think that's, that's in your notes. They're willing to do the installation of the signs for an additional $1,000, but they want the retainage released to, or half of the the retainage released down to 5%. Did I do that right?
No, 50%.
50%.
50%.
Okay. How much is that, by the way?
And it should be 10%.
10.
Should be 520,000. I think we've stepped over JP.
Held with every submission. I'm sorry. There's been 10% retained with every submission.
Okay.
So they, they be looking for how much dollar wise? About 260?
Whatever 50% of the current retention is, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the money's there. It's theirs under the contract. It's a matter of, um, you know, they're, they're substantially performed on all aspects of the contract.
If anything
We have to vote on that.
We do. Um, so and, and so I guess that would be the first would be a propos- I guess we should probably do it. Um, how about a motion to, um, authorize VMS for the sum of $1,000 to put the signs up for the fire department and for us to pay for the signs $5,700. So that's kind of a
We have to authorize the release of the retainage first for that to, for them to do that.
Okay, if you want to do it that way, it's fine with you.
JP, I mean, it sounds like that's what you're recommending. Is that correct?
It is, as is the architect.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm, I'm moved that we release 50% of the retainage.
Hmm, motion's been made in second discussion. We're, we're not terribly at risk of anything remaining to be done. If we let go.
We are, we have, we have the 250 plus the final requisition to, to use this leverage. So I'm, we're very secure in that.
Okay.
I'd like to see us in that building for a while before we give them the rest.
Okay.
But, but I think the contract specifies when they get it, so.
Yeah, it does. Um, and the con, and the, um, architect's okay with it too. So any further discussion? If not, all in favor of releasing 50% of the retainage, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries for zip. Part two, we've had a request from the, um, fire department to install signs uh, above the bay doors, the seal and the fire department badge, um, at a cost for the signs of 50, almost $5,800, 577, I think. 5,700 plus. And for a thousand dollars to have VMS install them. Uh, is there a motion on that? Motion's been made to approve. Is there a second? Motion seconded. Discussion? If none, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, by the way, where's the money coming from?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that. The sign money. Is that true, right?
The sign money is extra because the signs that were included were not these signs.
So how much money was included?
This, the, for these particular signs, nothing in the contract. There, there is signage provided for.
What is the signage provided for?
JP, what's the signage provided for?
So, uh, in the east elevation, the block letters Rutland Town, um, on the, the same with the west elevation, then on the south elevation, it's gonna be the Rutland Town Public Safety Building.
That stuff, so nothing for this, all right?
Which we are doing, so we are doing all of that still, right? This is just additional.
This is the specific signs over the doors and the seal, like we did on the other station.
Um, where does the money come from?
So when we had that long, lengthy discussion regarding what was left in the capital improvement fund.
Yes.
Did we exhaust it?
No. I know.
So would we be able to get to?
Pulling this out yet again. Um, so 179 minus, but JP's got another request to spend some more, um, minus the, um, 12,770 for the antenna for the radios and the, the system. And then we've, so that's down to 100 and come on, you're good at this. 179.6 minus 20, uh, 12,770?
Yeah, you're around 157.
Okay.
167.
Okay, yeah. 167 ish.
Yeah.
Um, and this will take
Did we take any other out of that?
Not yet, but there is the request for the vent for the extractor and we've got to deal with that tonight too.
Yeah, so that'll come out of that, which is 4,800.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. 48, um, and then this, so we're gonna be taking another 10, so we'll be down around 155,000. So I would, I would move we pay for the signs out of the, um, capital improvement fund.
Okay.
Based on the numbers.
So motion spent, did we vote on the first part of it to do the signs?
Yeah.
So now the secondary motion on this is to take it out of the cap, that, what we just passed out of the capital fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries for zip. Okay, now we've dealt with the signs. JP, the vent system.
Yes.
Um, there is a uh, VMS, uh, change order to add gear dryer vent through the roof. And that cost is 4,850 dollars. And the estimate is on our desks. The change order amount, I guess it's more than an estimate. Uh, is there a motion on that?
Move to approve and expend from capital improvement fund.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pay 4,850 to VMS for this, uh, gear dryer vent. And to come from the capital improvement fund. Discussion?
Taking good notes here.
Um, um,
The sticky note.
No, no, this is stapled. I wasn't gonna mess around with sticky notes. There's no further discussion on the dryer vent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's go.
Aye. Motion carries eight, or four zip. Four, okay. Um, and, oh shoot, is this one? Does somebody want to authorize me to sign?
So move.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to authorize me to sign. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Perfect.
Okay, it's in the green folder, Bill. Thank you. All right. JP, what else?
I think we've covered it all. Thank you.
Oh, I know, um, a follow up from the last meeting where you brought in the example of the state not being willing to enforce a landlord tenant, um, statute. And um, I asked Kevin about that because, and, and I, the minutes refresh my memory. You were gonna talk to Kevin with that example. Did you have a chance to do that?
I, I haven't got to him yet. I plan to this week.
Okay, great. Um, the pending motion is, do we, do we need? And is this evidence that we do need our own separate standalone health officer ordinance in the town to be able to take care of stuff like this? So more to come. Anything else for JP?
Um, JP, so we're gonna let you know probably in advance that, um, if the site visit at probably Days End, Denny's, um, and maybe the car wash down there regarding the sewer problems, if you want to be invited to those.
Yes, I heard that discussion and I did ask that if I could, I'd like to be present for that.
Okay. Anything else for JP? Um, longer range, the, and I'm Um, longer range, the, and I'm mentioning this while JP is on because he had something to do with it, there's question about the Sutton funds and how can they be invested separately?
Select board doesn't touch them.
Yeah, they're they're out of the hands of the select board.
And.
So the, so the.
But the fire department asked me, so I'm passing along.
If the fire department wants to reinvest their Sutton funds, that's one hundred percent up to the membership of the fire department.
Yeah. Yeah, they, yeah, it's it's, cause that's been, there was a.
It's considered a membership fund.
Yeah.
Well, I understood that the, it was, it was tied up and it was for the membership and only the interest to be used.
I can give you some history.
I asked because it was in the town report, so.
Yes, it has been reported in there, and I'm not sure if it needs to be or not.
Uh huh.
Um, somebody said yes, I disagreed with it because the fire department has that Fred Galloble Memorial Fund, which is the fireman's money, has nothing to do with the tax, and that isn't recorded, so. But when the Suttons passed away, they gave two thirds of this estate to the fire department, one third to the cemetery. Um, the cemetery has done a little better job at investing because there's way less committee members, so there's a whole lot less ideas, and you can, I'm telling you, Mary, cause I headed this up for, when I took over as chief, was just about the time this started, and you couldn't get, you can't hardly get three guys to agree on something, trying to get forty, thirty or forty of them, you you might just, well, it's like herding cats, you're just not getting anywhere. But the the fire department always took a very conservative approach to investing that money. And, um, they could look into doing, we we had a few ideas, we had some folks that were willing to help us, but I, you could just never get the membership to just take that step. Um, when Byron, you know, was heading up the cemetery commission, he did a really good job of investing the money, and their principal amount pretty much equals what the fire department says now, and they started, started out with half. You know, so I think that a good lesson learned is to talk with those folks about what they've done and and transfer some of that into the, because if you invest, you know, there was a while we invested it and we were doing better, and then when the market shifted, and and there's always been a very, very cautious approach in the firemen, very cautious.
So I, the cemetery investors, to follow whatever the state's model is.
Oh.
So there's twenty five percent in CDs and twenty five percent in something else, and there's certain percentages, and the state spells out how to invest that type of money.
Yeah, and and that may be, you know, a good, like, like I said, we had a few older members that got really bad and lost lots of money and savings and pensions, and they carried a lot of weight within the department.
So I could never get us to do anything.
Still probably need to have that return report, it's technically still town money and.
Yeah.
That's what makes it tax exempt, so it's public, public money.
It's it's public information and and, but it's just that it's not handled in the normal way the rest of the funds, the fire department has sole discretion as to what they do with. But the will did specifically specify that you can't spend the principal, you can spend anything you earn from the principal to do maintenance and purchase maintenance of equipment.
Yeah, and then if that interest money sits in the account too long, it's supposed to be swept back to add to the principal.
Right.
Very, very defined.
Yeah.
Oh, the cemetery for fifteen, twenty years never touched it, they just kept rolling it back in to build your principal, and then you get more yearly.
Yep.
So that's what that, they have that money market checking account.
I didn't see the will, I wasn't around when it was set up, so I'm asking because.
Should, I almost think there should be a copy here somewhere.
But I don't remember. I had it.
I think you did.
I didn't have it.
Yeah, but anyway, that that's, but I would suggest that they follow or talk with Kurt and BJ, cause I think they're the two running the show now.
So basically, it's not up to the select board?
Right.
Do you agree with that JP, it's not the select board's call, it's the firefighters' call? Did we lose them?
We did.
Again, I, I'm asking JP because I think he had something to do with how the thing was set up initially, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
Well, the will pretty is, pretty specific, it's actually very, very specific, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you for your guidance, appreciate it. Um, and that completes the JP report, Barbara Noisepole, oh, sorry.
Thank you, have a good, have a good night, thank you.
Thanks JP.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, just a little bit of an update on the the Pocket Park. It it appears as though Kevin Brown is, uh, in discussions with GMP about a quitclaim deed um, for the two parcels there on the Simons Avenue side of the river. So, um, that looks like it's coming together, and it looks like there will be, uh, not much of a if any of a financial impact on the town, is that how you read it, Mary?
Um, yeah, um, it's, GMP did, I mean, it's, we're we're taking it as is with flowage rights, and we're also, um, agreeing to a separate, we'll have the documents in front of us to vote on it at next meeting, um, but we're also agreeing to a second uh, deed, which is a utility easement, which pretty much mirrors what they already have, but they wanted to be able to keep the easement along Simons Avenue, which makes sense. Um, and Barbara is writing a grant and made the point that if we actually owned the property at the time she submitted the grant, early December, um, then we would be in better position to get some grant money, so that's why we're kind of pushing, so Bill, on next meeting's agenda should include the transfer of property from GMP to the town for the Pocket Park. Hopefully, we'll have documents in front of you before then.
That'd be great, yeah, but the grant we're going after is the, um, Forest Parks and Recs Recreational Trails Program Grant. So, um, you may recall, it's up to fifty thousand dollars per grant award. Um, I think I misspoke the last time, the the match, the local match is twenty percent, but that can include some in-kind work, which I'm quite sure we can get quite a bit, um, uh, included for that. Um, right now, I'm working on the budget and and talking to some trails, um, constructors, builders about their rates. Uh, we have quite a bit of trail linear feet built into the initial design that the planning commission came up with. We may want to pare that back, it's, it's about five thousand linear feet right now, so that's gonna, that's gonna add up and and take most of the fifty thousand right there, I think, but, um, more later about that, about that, as I find out, um, more information. And get get components of the grant together. Uh, the planning commission, um, worked on its budget, so we're ready to go there, we did that at our last meeting. It's a very complicated budget the planning commission has. But we, yeah, we made it through, that 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 exercise.
And. Anything? Okay, any, anything else, any questions for Barbara or the planning commission? Nope, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, thought I saw Larry Delvanary on earlier, but.
Just give up.
He left, okay. Um, Marcia Choffey.
I am here, Mary.
Good, thank you, Marcia.
Sure. Um, there's only one thing that, um, I have to, uh, discuss this evening, and you and I kind of touch base, um, earlier today. Uh, we are no longer going to be able to use the services of Gail Gantic from G and K, she is retiring. So, um, what is going to happen is the, um, Lister's office, uh, is going to have to absorb the, um, business and personal property, um, using the, um, cost factors and the depreciation schedule for any of the businesses that are coming into, uh, the, uh, town of Rutland for the twenty five, twenty six tax year.
Um, so we, we had a good conversation, and thank you for the heads up, so. Can, can you folks handle it? That's the first question.
Yes, I think we can, I think we can, I've been working with, um, with Gail since, well, I thought it was two thousand nine, but it was actually two thousand eleven that I started taking over the business personal property, um, in in the Lister's office, and, um, Gail and I have had a very, very good relationship, she has been more than generous in teaching me and guiding me into the, um, assessments of property and and so forth. Um, we are gonna have some problem children, as, uh, anybody has, uh, GE being one of them, but she has assured me that she is willing to um, intercede and help me with any problems that we may have going forward with GE. The other accounts are, they're complicated, but, um, we'll have to pay close attention to any deletions or additions additions of equipment, inventory and and so forth. Uh, we're taking on two hundred and fifty five accounts, which is going to, um, it's gonna stress our department a little bit. Um, I'm going to be preparing Kathy to help me out with the business personal property. Um, so we will be working from probably mid-February, which is when I send out all of my inventory forms, um, to all of our accounts. And the crunch of the season usually begins probably, um, mid-March through early, early May, is when the crunch of the accounts start coming in.
Um, so you're gonna have to probably put in more time yourself.
Absolutely, yep.
And.
Shuttles funds.
Yeah, and we do have some funds left over from the Gantic contract, right?
Yes, we do, yes.
Building the new budget, we'll have to address that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna, you guys will be working a few more hours for a few months.
Right, and I would also be, you know, hoping that we would get more compensation for the time that we're putting in.
As in a, an hourly pay increase or just more hours? Oh.
Both, or one or the other, both are one or the other, Marcia.
Well, um, an hourly pay increase for sure, um.
Cause you're gonna be working more hours.
Yes, and, um, I, when I talked to Mary this morning, um, we discussed how many hours I anticipate that I would be working, and, um, it's, it's not going to be, um, well, probably from, like I said, from the middle, well, February is going to be a slow month, that's when we get out all of our forms. Nothing starts coming in until March through April and into May, even though the cutoff point is April twentieth. But a lot of companies don't get their, um, declarations in until after, you know, after April twentieth, and we, you know, we overlook that because, just because of the circumstances. Um, but I'm putting in, as I told Mary, I'm putting in, right now I work thirty two hours a week, I anticipate that maybe for six weeks or so, I would be working forty, maybe forty two hours a week.
And Kathy's going to up her time as well?
Kathy is also going to up her time. Um, she is willing to work whatever I need her to work, she, right now, she's only working ten hours, um, a week. Um, which is good, because this is, you know, this is a slow time of the year, we don't have a lot going on. Grand list has always been, uh, has already been, you know, sent to the state. Um, we are doing, um, site visits, because the weather has been good, we've been able to do a lot of site visits and get the information into the grand list. Um, but, um, but other than that, you know, um, like I said, we'll get the forms out in February, and everything will start coming back in, you know, early, early March, right through April, and even into, even into May, and, uh, you know, Gail has offered to, um, you know, help with anything that we need, um, especially with GE, because GE is our problem child. Um, and she said that she would be willing to, you know, help us out with that.
But we need some funds in that account in there for her contract services, because we're gonna have to pay her.
Um.
No, she is not requesting any pay for her services.
Yeah, well.
We, we might want to have just something in there for a contractor, if she can do it, um, or and she has expenses, we'll want to cover those, and if she can't, then we'll have to maybe bring in somebody for the big ones like that.
All right.
No.
Yeah.
Remember from my discussion.
Maybe bringing in a professional assessor for any of the big accounts, very much so.
Five or six thousand, ten thousand.
And we will also need to, um, talk about for town meeting, uh, uh, item on the ballot to ask voters whether we should shift from a Lister form to an appraiser's department in the town, so.
Correct, yep. Um, my.
Talk about that.
Yep, I'm up in twenty twenty six, so I will be here until twenty twenty six, but I am not running for reelection, and I have the feeling that neither Marie nor Kathy are going to stay on after that as well. I'm not sure of that, but, um, I just get the general feeling that they will not. So we will have to go to an assessor type of, uh, for the grand list for taxation purposes.
More discussion to come.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you for the heads up, appreciate it.
And I didn't know whether you wanted any, any figures as to what, you know, the business personal property, um, you know, brings in. Um, you know, a, as of this year, when we finalized the business personal property, um, it was at three hundred and thirty million, forty seven thousand, three hundred and twenty three dollars. And with the tax rate of twenty one point oh three cents, this is bringing you almost six hundred and ninety five thousand dollars in tax revenue. So.
Good numbers, yeah, thanks.
Think we can afford to lose this amount of taxation.
Um, if you have a proposal for, um, your pay, you should probably get that to us so we can talk about it.
Absolutely, yep, we'll do, Mary, yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know, yeah, questions for Marcia in the Lister's office? Okay, we're done, that's it, unless you have something more?
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Yep.
Good night. Just so you know, and of course, you you know you're right, um, the amount left after all of the deductions that we voted on tonight, and the capital improvements fund is one hundred and fifty five thousand, two twenty two. Very good.
Ain't it no, you gotta, as I said, we we were joking about every time we spend money, put a sticky note over there, so Carrie knows what we're.
You got a sticky note to go over?
No, but I did write some notes when.
Okay.
I'm trying to keep track now.
Um, I try, and I usually, and sometimes she, she double checks me, so, um, I'll try and remember to do a quick memo to her and email to her tomorrow saying this is what we spend to come out of the funds. Okay, Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Hi, uh, not much to report tonight, um, we did go over the budget, there was a couple of questions on it for um, a few categories. Um a few categories of, since it's a department building.
Um, right.
If the money's gonna come out of the town budget. Or one of our budgets, but there's no way to separate it, so. So, electricity was the first one, telephone, water sewer, heating, fuel, building maintenance.
No, some of those we had already shifted partially over to the general. Um. Yeah, let me see which ones. We had shifted over. The building maintenance, um the electricity and the heating fuel. But we didn't do anything with the phones.
Phones and the water sewer.
The water sewer.
They'll probably should all. Go into the general.
Those probably need to go over to general.
This is just the only to figure that out.
Yeah.
What's the internet, Billy?
That's the thing where you access information.
It's a good thing you're sitting way over here.
Um, we, you can, we can break it down, we do right now for the police, cause they pay a portion of the. Charge for this building, so it is possible to do that.
That one we may want to.
We do get bills by lines, by numbers, so. Um and the, with, with West Ruttland taking over the fire district over here, which is what the fire station's connected to. Uh the sewer bill's gonna be four hundred and forty dollars a year, that's it.
So, center station, we have no problems, fuel, electricity. All of the things Chris just mentioned, he'll have that in the budget for one station. The new building will just be separate.
Yeah.
So you will have to have some in your budget, Chris, for center, but the public safety building probably come out of the general. That's their plan.
So we, the, the new bill cycle for consolidated started today. Um and there's proration in there because the new building is now online with these things, so there's a proration on there. So, December nineteenth or twentieth is when the next bill comes out. That will be the one that will be a little more accurate for who pays for, or how much each department pays for, so. Um. We wanna leave those blank for a little bit, we, we could fill.
Does it have separate internet and phone?
It does, yeah, I mean, the, the bills are sixty pages long, so.
Sixty.
Oh yeah, well, it's every, it's every department in town comes on one bill, so.
So, so you could figure out what Chris would need for his portion of.
The, the. That happened right now in the clerk's office, so they, 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 they divide out the police for here, so it's just a.
Okay.
It's just moving that over there, so, yeah.
So I'm just wondering if he should still worry about phone and internet for his portion of the public safety building.
So, we have like one internet bill for this building and we split it with police, so. Like, if, if you want to discuss that or just wanna leave, put it in the general and, and move internet and phone off of theirs, I.
To me, it'd be easier to just put it all under general and just.
Every department has an internet bill and phone bill, so.
Yeah, cause the rec, the rec has it now.
So, I, I think that's an answer to your question, Chris. We should move those over to general. The water sewer. Um, the phone, what was the other thing? Electricity?
Electricity, yeah, there's.
Are we gonna move the phone near? We'll have what a police budget to.
Um.
Well, it's always easier to separate. According to Bill, they can both, the phone and the internet could be separated, so.
Public safety building right now, they've created, there is one account for that building.
Okay.
Because that's how they bill it, like that's, they, they can't bill it for half of the building, so it's, we have, we receive a, we receive a bill per building.
Do you know what the lines are?
Yes.
We can split it up, just like the police gets split up now.
Right, once the proration thing gets sorted out.
See, you can figure it out, yeah, the fuel, the electricity and the building maintenance are almost impossible to do.
Yeah.
But the internet, it sounds like the internet and phone can be. So Chris can put that in for center and his portion of McKinley, whereas the same with the police budget, they'll have a, in there for.
Okay.
For their internet and phone.
And water sewer.
The water and sewer will be ours. For that building, center's building will be fires.
Okay.
Cause they're two separate buildings.
Yep.
That works out.
Okay.
That helpful, Christopher?
Extremely, yep.
If you want to create like a municipal water and sewer line addition to the general budget to, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so there'd be a, probably, and you do whatever, but I would think in that, like, we have the section for. Um the planning commission, a section for whatever, and we'll have a PSB section now.
We already, we are free lines for it, so.
Yeah, so we'll have a PSB section. Perfect.
Okay.
We keep growing, and they need more pages.
Do we, do you want the, want a public safety building like utilities, like the electricity and water sewer just under one line? Rather than trying to separate it out, measure value and separating out the water and sewer bill and electricity bill?
I think there is, at least for a while, so we can see how that.
Use your track for at least a year or two if it's separated out, that we can see where.
I think that's the same format we use for everything else, right? Everybody else has them separate, there, nobody has just utilities. They always have everything separate.
Okay. Um, as you heard, we approved the signs for your um truck bays. And the shield and the town seal. And also, we approved a thousand dollars for VMS to. Um install them, and that's all coming out of the capital fund, not your budget.
Alright, I'll order those tomorrow morning.
Okay.
We are not asking for any money on the depreciation fund this year, a couple reasons. Uh one's because we asked for a lot for the building. And two, rumor has it that if I wasn't building seven hundred thousand dollar fire trucks, I'd have plenty of money. For quite a few years for the next fire trucks, so. This year, we're not asking for a nickel for those two reasons.
Okay.
So, that's all I got.
No, no request for an increase, you're still gonna get your usual.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Mary, this is. Maybe a little bit of a detour, but was there something there that we just separated out that was, that we don't have in our police budget?
Um. Water sewer?
But I thought that was part of general. So for example, like we have communication on here, but that was like. There's nothing in the police budget now for.
Phone, you know.
There's nothing in it for water sewer, there is for communication. Um.
It's communicate, radio license.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just looking at the police budget, Chris, cause it, um, we're talking about. Them paying for their portion of the. Um internet and phone, but there's no line items unless communication covers them. Do you know where it comes out now, Bill? When?
I think it's the radios.
Probably out of the communication line.
Well, that could be equipment.
Well, we'll need to figure that out.
Okay. Yeah, so it looks like we need a little more information on that.
They're paying it, but we don't know where they're getting it from. Great.
Okay, anything else for our town fire chief? Do I have? Did that? Okay, anything else for us, Chris?
No, that's it.
Okay, good, thank you very much.
You.
Next, uh Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening.
Good evening. I have a little bit of a list to go over. Hopefully, it's all quick. First, there's a few things on your desk in front of you. Um, the first thing, uh actually, there's two things, Mary, I need from you on your desk. Um, one is the um audit letter for the single audit. And um Andrew and I met yesterday, and he needs that signed. So if you could go ahead and sign that and I can send the copy to him.
Okay, well, I will if the select board authorizes me. This is for the single audit. This is in additional to our usual audit, and this is required because.
Oh, great.
We receive federal funds in excess of whatever their trigger amount was. Um and the estimated cost, it was.
Engagement letter or?
This is not our usual engagement letter. This is the alternative compliance examination engagement letter. Um, and where's the number? I did see it earlier. Oh. Um, we estimate that our fees for these services will range from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. So.
So.
Not as, not as much as we feared.
Uh authorized, Mary, to um sign the single audit um agreement with AMP.
And, and agree to.
The sum of five to ten thousand.
Right, so a second motion's made and seconded to approve the AMP single audit. Um bid letter. And to authorize me to sign. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, alright.
Aye, motion carries for zip. Um, am I the management signature, Carrie?
I always get confused on that, so I think so.
I think I am. Governance. Governance and management, okay.
You might be governance.
I think we're governance, she's management.
Management.
Alright.
Always add your title after your name, so it's clear.
I, well, they did have a title place, so I'm doing that. Okay, that's in Bill's folder, Carrie.
Okay.
Okay, what else?
Other thing that I need from you is um Ted and I were talking. And he is in need of the signed. Um board meeting minutes from September twenty-fourth, where it was discussed and approved. For the police um having a new plan starting next fiscal year. Um on their, I think it's the retirement, they're, they discussed the Plan D. With you guys, and we cannot seem to, those are the minutes that are somehow missing. Um in our pile of all the minutes. He needs those to send to the company that is requesting them. We were talking and wondering if you could re-sign those meeting minutes and then. I'll give a copy to him and then file them with the rest of our meeting minutes in the office.
Um, already done, we circulated them first thing, and they're in the green folder too, so thanks for catching that.
I will um let him know, he really appreciates that, he's kind of wondering what to do, so I'll let him know tomorrow. And then, um, let's see. There is, well, quickly, um there's the lot money, the local options money. That came in, we had two installments um since. I think one was in August and then one in November. And um I gave you the current amounts and then stapled to your. Chart is the amounts at the same time as last year. Both amounts this year have come in under what we. Uh received last year for the same timeframe. We're still on track, but I just wanted to give you a comparison.
Yes, that was really helpful, thank you. Um, we still, and we were projecting a total of well, one million three hundred, and we are. Um well on track to make that amount and then some, but it's not the big surplus that we had last year.
Yeah.
But if you look at what we asked for last year, it's kinda like almost, we'll be close.
Okay.
If I looked at it right.
Okay, any questions of the um local option tax? Okay.
And then the, um just quickly, the election um for the general election went well. Um, it was uh about seventy-eight percent of our voters participated. On average, and that's kind of what the state saw. On average, was in the seventy range for participation. Um so that's good, um it went pretty smoothly, so um. Again, I did send out a thank you to everybody that participated for the staff. I did have some extra staff um available as well, and I extend my gratitude to them as well. So um hopefully, when we go into March, we'll see just as many voters out there voting for our town budget, so that would be nice. Um, yeah. Um, and then speaking of budgets, um. Bill and I were talking, and I know one of your items on the agenda was. To discuss a potential pre-town meeting date. I know the school was wondering, and I looked at my calendar as far as the deadlines that I need to meet. In January for our ballot and petitions and such like that, so I suggested maybe. Tuesday, the twenty-first of January to do it. Um, it, on my calendar, going by every other week, I do not believe that we have. A select board meeting on that week. However, I think it needs to kinda look. Bill, I just wanna let you know that on the agenda that you have at the bottom, I. Either you or I are incorrect, but I think that January seventh and the twenty-first on the bottom. Might not be right.
Yes, yes.
The fourteenth and, fourteenth and twenty-eighth.
So.
I just.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Twenty-first was conflicting with one of those, so. That was my suggestion, but you guys can come up with a date if you need to, that's different.
And that fits all of your timelines, okay?
It should follow the timelines, okay, um it's in between two deadlines. And the only thing that it's really contingent upon is when we have to get the town report submitted. Because in the town report needs to be the, the warning, so um it needs to be all kinda tidied up by then. So, but we don't have that deadline yet, so.
You don't know when the town report is due at the printers?
No.
Next week.
Uh, next week or the week after, I've already, I've already been talking with her, so.
Okay.
They're putting their timeline together, so.
The twenty-first, it's in between meetings.
Yep.
So we usually, we've done it in the past, we've done a board meeting.
Right after.
And that gets. You all out of this room for three weeks, so.
Right.
I have time to put kind of work together in this room.
Right.
If we did it the twenty-eighth, is that too late for Carrie?
I don't.
Is the twenty-eighth too late for you, Carrie?
Well, I don't think it's too late for me, but I'm wondering if it's too late for the town report deadline.
By the next board meeting, I should have those, I should have that.
So we can wait.
So, yeah, we can, we can wait. If the school is wondering, we're talking about. The twenty-first, but we haven't made a decision yet, cause we need to find out about the town report printing.
You mean twenty. He's trying to, Vic does for three weeks, is what he's trying to do.
I know, I got that.
So you don't wanna do this one, is that what you're saying?
I'm not crazy about the twenty-eighth, it just feels too late for me. I'm, I'd prefer the twenty-first, but let's find out what the town report deadline is, that's really what governs it.
Yeah. We have to.
Okay, Bill, just keep it on the agenda for next time?
Cause don't we have to, that's the night we finalize everything, and we have to sign all those orders after.
Right.
But we don't need a meeting to do that, as long as we're there.
As long as we vote on it.
Yeah, we're there.
Yeah.
But. I wonder if that has to be warned as a, cause we're taking board action.
Oh, we usually do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why.
Actually, that's right, we usually have a meeting right before we recess.
Yes.
We go into the pre-town.
That's why the twenty-eighth is our regular meeting.
Okay, so we will need to warn that if that's what we end up doing.
Twenty-first, we'll just, that'll be a special.
Next meeting, we should have.
We should know all of that.
Okay, and then we could set that.
Okay, um Carrie also provided for budgeting purposes, the. Um, premium increase for our health insurance. Um and that, it, this, that. Um, and that, it, this, that takes effect, it's about an eighteen percent increase. Um, that takes effect January first of twenty-twenty-five, so that's like.
Two months, a month and a half away.
Right. Am, am I correct that those figures all kick in beginning January first?
I believe so, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
It's sad, but it's
Yeah.
something that we're all dealing with, so.
Yeah.
The increase is incredible.
Yep. Um, so just keep that in mind when you're, so it's, I did quick calculation. Check my math, folks, but um, that's why I had Carrie include, thank you very much, the two last year's premium sheet and this year's premium sheet, and it looks like an eighteen percent. Um, and don't forget, as I mentioned before, the payroll, our share, or our total um, pickup of the payroll for childcare costs, the new tax that's through, coming through. Okay, anything else, Carrie?
Yeah, along those lines is one last thing. Um, I, I know that Bill sent an email out earlier, eh, about a little bit ago, maybe a month or so ago. The LCT is pushing a, um, it's called Wise Benefits and it's a supplemental um, option for our employees for three items. I think we can pick and choose. Um, but I wanted to mention it tonight because I got a phone call from the LCT recently asking if we had any interest, if anyone wanted to sign up for these extra benefits um, at the cost of the employee. At the time, I said I hadn't had anybody interested in it. I'm not even sure if everybody read that particular email. Um, so the, the open enrollment deadline is this Friday and I wanted to mention it again. I know it's really soon um, as far as a deadline, but I was looking closer into it just because I had a little extra time instead of the elections on our mind all the time. Um, and i- it's kind of interesting and I'll just put it out there. It's small premiums based on what you as an employee would want to sign up for, if anything. Um, and it's by month, obviously, but there are three things that it offers. It offers critical illness insurance, um, accidental, um, and a life insurance um, plan. And if you wanted to know a little bit more about it, I do have the link again. I could send out for the um, information. I think there's only one open enrollment per year on these things. But if we are interested in something like this and maybe it's too soon, like it's too late for the deadline, maybe we look into it for next year. Um, I know that a- as we all know, life just creeps up on you and things unexpected happen to anyone at any time and this critical illness thing really got my attention um, in particular. I'd like to learn a little bit more about exactly what it covers. Does go into a little bit of what like percentage it covers for like, say, cancer or a heart attack or um, I'm looking at one of them, major burns or paralysis. Um, Alzheimer's disease, i- it talks about that and I, I just think it would be a little, I think it would be worth it to understand more for our employees. Like I said, life is unexpected, so if they're offering something like that at a small cost, I don't know, maybe it's something we look into. But.
Um, do, i- in order for employees to sign up to, does the select board need to do anything?
I don't think so. They said um, to have an employee fill out the, the form and I don't exactly know all the particulars as far as um, they, they probably bill us and then we w- we make sure, take it out of employees' paychecks and then therefore you know, um, pay the bill. I'm not sure how that works. Um, I mean, we could try to find out a little bit more, but I, I, I don't know. I just wanted other people to hear that this is available and that I'm offering it from the LCT so that if someone finds out that hey, she never said anything, I, I did. I wanted to say something because it sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Suggest sending an email if you haven't, of course, but if it's Friday, it's
Yeah.
Does sound like something they should probably, I mean, maybe the LCT would send somebody in to talk to people about it sometimes too.
I think that they did have that option for um, for companies that were interested in it. I think we're kind of late in thinking about it and I personally apologize for, for that. I mean, we were quite inundated with elections. Um, we did send it out once, but that probably wasn't enough, but um, maybe it's something we can look into for next year.
Thanks for bringing it to everyone's attention.
Yeah, I could send this back out tomorrow to everyone and you guys can take a look at it again. Just see what you think.
Okay. Anything else for our town clerk and treasurer? No, if not, thank you very much, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Okay, Mike Delahanty, is he on? Great. And Bill Sweet, Town Administrator.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ed just messaged me asking if the meeting's still going, so maybe, he may be trying to join in a little bit. I don't, I don't know, so.
Shelley's thing came up there at one point.
Well, yeah, Shelley, Shelley did, but that's, she usually comes on when she tries to time around him, but yeah, so he may, he may be coming. I'm, I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
Um, good evening. Um, not a lot left to go over, which is pretty, pretty well. Uh, the, as I mentioned before, the phones and the internet are up and running at the new building. The phones aren't installed yet because there's no desks, there's no counters, there's nothing to put them on. Uh, but they, we have extensions, we have phone numbers. Uh, and I'm going to be giving everybody that has a phone uh, a sheet to go over because on each of our phones, we can pick who we want our direct extensions to be, like you can pick like the highway office, you can, things like that, so that they'll be able to pick that and set up each phone individually. Uh, so that'll be, that'll make things a little bit easier for everybody. Um, and I have a meeting tomorrow with Consolidated to talk about the billing, to make sure we're all set and that it's, and I, I should really get some, I'm gonna try and get some information on the real um, monthly recurring charges and we can work on that, so I can, like, because I want to try and get those budget sheets filled in as much as I can. I know that was a topic that's come up a couple of times, so. Got that, I've already got that planned. Uh, I got an email today uh, from Stantec about the service road, asking if we are going to be having any plans for that in this coming year, if they need to do anything to prepare for that. And I said, the board's meeting, I'll let you know. So they're wondering if we're gonna do anything with the service road construction that they want to be involved with.
Well, I'd like to build it three years ago, four years ago, but.
That's, that's where we were headed, but.
I think we need to probably, we have the information. They finished up what we asked them, so.
Yes.
The next step, I'm not sure where the next step is. Is it to um, come up with a cost estimate?
Uh, yeah.
I think so.
Cost estimate and then.
And then.
Hit it.
If we want to put it out to bid or how we could pay for it.
Yeah.
Their cost estimates weren't too bad, but it would require another bond or something of that nature, and so we've got one and we got a pool coming, so I don't.
Yeah. No.
And I don't know if there's any pots of money out there available for some of this reconstruction.
I.
I think I'm gonna ask Robert that Thursday.
Okay.
He might know.
Okay.
That'd be one of the things I'm gonna ask.
Yeah.
Lots of money. And you know, new administration coming in, there might be more. Or there might be a different set of pots, so who knows? Um, previous Republican administrations have done things like revenue sharing. Remember that? Of block grants, going way back.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, so what we talked about on Thursday, but, but they were interested, so I, I wanted to uh, to mention it. Uh, and reminder, the building, uh, town hall will be closed next week, Thursday and Friday for, for Thanksgiving. Uh, and uh, one thing that we, we did, I touched on it earlier and you know, with the budget discussions, the, the five-year plans have kind of
Oh, yeah.
fallen away a little bit. Uh, so I don't, you know, we, with, it's, it's kind of been, it's been one of those things that's been on the committee agenda list, I send out every Monday, but it doesn't really ever really come up, which is, which is fine, but I think we, with, with, with all the discussion about the depreciation accounts and you know, I, I, I think we probably need to get a better handle on where we are, where we want to go, to know what we need to do to get there, so. Um, you know, whether we want to kind of come up with a, whether it would leave it to department head to come up with their own, or if we want to say like, you know, we want to kind of come up with a you know, what do you have, what it's gonna cost, and if we want to have something consistent between all the departments.
Well, um, starting with those who are requesting an increase, an increase in the depreciation fund, it occurs to me that they probably already have some kind of an equipment or, or they have something that they can update because that would be the basis for why they're asking for an increase. Um, I, I frankly think everybody should have it and we should look at it once a year anyway, but um, you know. We haven't done it for police cruisers, as I was mentioning earlier. We have one for fire equipment. Um, and highway has a something, but yeah.
Yeah, highway's expanded really fast.
Changed a lot.
Four or five years, so you know, and with this, it's on our agenda, it'll be on our agenda. I think, like I said, we'll be here for a while on Thursday, but.
Okay.
We'll get through the budgets. You know, I imagine Dave might have some time to get that worked on and get it some preliminary numbers and.
Um, building, this building in particular.
Yeah.
Um, I know we got the estimate of the renovations downstairs, so what is there for the general budget? Is there some parts of it you want to start on? And stick in the budget or?
We've done some, but I think the next steps are gonna get expensive.
It's, it's, loo- looking at like the, the scope, it's, it's really gonna be difficult to try and, it's not like, we can't like do the kitchen. Like, it's just, it's just not.
Yeah. Once you're in there, I think we're gonna be in there. I think the, the consensus of the plan was that we would be able to fund portionists through our capital improvement, but we need to get kind of the dust settled on that and see where that is and then figure out, you know. Because it's, it's gonna be expensive. There, they may be able to do a portion of it, but we gotta get some kind of a breakdown. We got the electrical portion done and some of the stuff moved, so that was done and, and then we gotta decide how much we want to put into that building maintenance for next year and what we can do, but I think once you start.
Yeah.
Renovating that area that's going to be the office space and bathrooms that, and the kitchen area, that's gonna be.
All one thing, yes, it's.
And I don't know if they could do that and then do the meeting rooms. I, they may be able to do it that way. I don't know. So we'll have to.
We, we didn't really, that, that, that approach didn't really come up in the discussions at all because that really wasn't the, the plan, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We may need to try to get a meeting with Ed before we finalize the budget. I don't know. December meeting.
Yep.
Or we just say, let it ride.
Well, just, you know, if we do something, I don't think we can, you know, we might need like, now, I don't know what the cost, there was a cost estimate that was.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Was so.
Like six fifty.
Six fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it, it's.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a big, it's a, it's a big project. It really, it's a big project.
Considering how much we've done with just sticking something extra in the budget every year to get this floor in.
We got, we got this floor done. The bottom we, is gonna be the expected part.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
So my thought with five-year plans, I mean, I do have one that I keep up with for this building.
Okay.
But the other departments are just kind of, we just have, it hasn't really come up in, in, in great detail lately, so. But use this, this time of year, usually kind of starts to come around again to, to know what we need, so. But yeah, I mean, it hasn't been a lot of discussion about the depreciation and, and you know, that's why I got the history and all the, your, your reminders have all the history in there for everything, so that way we know.
That's good.
And it was interesting to look at the language and the language is varies. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we need to get a more unified language.
Yeah. Uh, I think that, that was everything I had on my list.
Um, we have item number two, same sons.
Oh, yes. Um, that was just, they, they, they sent us their notice. Uh, same son of Vermont is uh, moving forward on a proposed uh, solar array uh, off of US Fort East. Um, it's currently owned by the Abitels. It's a pretty sizable parcel, uh, looks like Coffin Incorporated is in the purchase, in the process of acquiring the property and installing the solar array. It's gonna be on the hill kind of overlooking Home Depot uh, to the east of that, so. There's a very small little right-of-way to get to Route Four East, access the whole place.
Did the planning commission get?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, are they asking for anything?
Nothing yet. Um, they're saying there's, they are not aware of any active fifty permits impacting the property. Um, but they are going to, they are, they do require approval from the Public Utility Commission and uh, the, uh, certificate of public good, so that's, they are going through that pro, they are going through that process. So they're, they said they're gonna be filing for that um, in approximately forty-five days.
Right, this is our forty-five day notice.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. There's a couple of things, like, they said they're gonna be putting the power to Woodstock Avenue, which I doubt. Probably Route Four East and they've got the road name wrong, but other than that, it's pretty close.
Maybe they don't know where they're building it.
No. But it's a pretty good size, pretty good sized project. It looks like it will be visible from Route Four.
Yeah.
And it was, uh, yeah, twelve, twelve hundred modules.
How big are the ones down on Coal River Road? Do we know?
Which shot?
I can't remember.
Just trying to get an idea of the size.
Well, it says eleven to twelve feet tall.
Five hundred kilowatts is not really that much. You know, that other one is the remember the new one, that third twenty, thirty acres is a one or two megawatt.
Yeah.
That, that's a big site. The other site, I don't know how big that is either.
So, planning commission has it, if they have any recommendations, they'll tell us.
Yes.
Put this in the green folder.
Looks like pretty much.
Okay. Um, we've.
Twelve hundred.
We've done all of our uh, committee meetings. We met with Cedar, we've discussed uh, pre-town meeting dates and we'll get back to that next meeting. We, um, JP's gonna follow up with Kevin Brown on the local health ordinance, but we need to keep that on the agenda. Um, Carrie brought up the changes in the employee benefit costs and, and provided us with information so we can budget. Um, ma, 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 any other new items?
We had the uh, public meeting right before this meeting for the Route Seven sidewalk. It went very well. The people were.
Everybody that was here is in favor of this.
Yeah.
There, there was no opponents. I was.
Not at all.
I kind of was hoping that Paul would come in Gallo because he's gonna be impacted.
Yeah.
And um, but I didn't see him and the folks from the uh, appliance store.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that are gonna be impacted.
But we, we are gonna have a meeting just specifically for, for, for those, yeah, for those folks right in that area, so.
The people who bought Mr. Twitter's? Were they in here?
That's the Gallows.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know he bought that.
Yeah, yeah, all about that. Um, so the, the thing with the sidewalk and that was, came up tonight. The state right-of-way is ninety-nine feet up through there. So a good portion of this will be within that state right-of-way. There may be some that's on private land and that's what we'll need to even, so part of the stuff that's us, they're doing now with the um, survey is to see where the right-of-way is, because we all know that the roads are not always centered in the right-of-way. So I'm hoping this road is centered to the east of the right-of-way, which means we'll have more land on the west side. But we won't know, but that's what the survey, part of the survey is, is to see where this can be done. And the other thing that came up is the transition between this new sidewalk, multi-use path and what the city has done. So, so the city, their bike path starts somewhere in the neighborhood of Paul's Cleaners.
Okay.
Or a little bit further south.
Just over that crest, yeah.
It's a little bit further. A little bit further, maybe right on that borderline with the, um.
Right, the little mini plaza there.
Or somewhere in that area, um. And this ends at Comcast driveway, so there's gonna be a portion in there, so what we've requested, uh, Santak to do is. Look at the proposal to extend the left turn lane. Where it is through the city, and that stays until McKinley Avenue. So that will be one lane of traffic. And then the left turn lane will end about McKinley, and that will allow the bike path to run parallel to the shared use path. And then it'll be easier to transition, and this will have two benefits to the town. Number one, it's gonna continue to decrease speeds. From about Max Steel to East Pittsburgh Road. Um, Doc JP was on there, he would confirm what I'm gonna tell you, is that he has stopped cars in excess of sixty miles an hour. Because they're frustrated driving through the city, and then they explode out of there, one of the participants of the meeting night was Josh Mack, or. Josh from Max Steel, and he said they deal with it on daily, he said you cannot believe how. Much the speed has increased in front of their built, their property. Since the, the change in traffic, because people have to drive thirty-five miles an hour for the most part, and as soon as that goes to two lane, they just take off. But, but JP has told me the highest he's stopped one is at sixty-three, flown by Postro. Or McKinley Avenue, so this is one of the things, um, something I didn't bring up when Dave was on earlier, and we discussed out front here. Um, petitioning the state to extend the left turn lane from where it ends in the city to the Tressel. So we need to talk to, I think it's Teresa Gilman from the state. And, and look into it, and get this road, so the left, because in my opinion, having a left turn lane out front here would be beneficial. To a lot of things, the road appears to be, so when we had the state people on last Thursday, when we had a preliminary meeting for tonight's meeting. I asked them about that, and so they brought it right up, and, and he was showing, and it appears the road is the same width. That we could get this, so you would keep that consistent left turn lane to get down to the East Proctor Road. Because there's enough businesses and, and residents here where, where.
Crossing.
And there are people.
Even where there are not crosswalks.
Oh, yeah, this crosswalk gets a lot of use.
So if we could get.
Pedestrians don't, they don't pay attention to pedestrians, but gets a lot of use.
So if we could get that left turn lane through the front here, it would narrow up the breakdown lane, but. And it's, so I think that we should move forward with that, I don't know exactly, wasn't it Teresa Gilman that we need?
It was Teresa, there's that new guy that started, we've been talking with, we talked about Simon Zav and a couple of the projects with Chris.
Is, is that something you want one of us to do, Bill, or you want to contact him and have him contact one of us, I wrote that down here somewhere, but I don't see it now.
We, we talked to him, we, we, if we want to talk, we, we, we started the conversation about Simon's ad, we kind of haven't gone anywhere with that either, so. If we can.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, we can get this. We missed the ball when the state repaved. To ask them to.
Well, we got other things, though.
No, but, yeah, I know, but we didn't get everything, but, you know, we missed the ball, and so they paved it and left it, it's lines right the same. We missed the ball when the city did it, because that is the US Highway, maintain. That, the city must do it under contract, so I'm thinking, well, we're always chasing our tail, but. It would just be, I think it'd be a lot easier. Couple of things that came up.
Okay, good. Anything, let's see, I've been through everything on our list, anything new, new, I think that was one of them. Um, and we've talked about the committee meetings. I don't think we need to do anything in executive session, we may, if. We have the documents for the land transfer from GMP to us, we may for the next meeting, but. Um, anyway, there's that.
Move to adjourn.
I like that. Questions made in second and to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, unanimous, thank you very much.